Thank you. Councilor Drew, would you like to do as the honor? Thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we gather this evening in this council meeting, we're grateful for the opportunity that we have to serve. We pray for thy Spirit this night as we deliberate and discuss matters that concern the town of Cartston, that we will be able to act and say those things that we need to and be able to make the proper decisions that will help prosper our town. Grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy and pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. All right, so today is the eighth of September 2020, and we have our regular town council meeting. We like to call the meeting to order, and we recognize that we have Cory McAlthing for Channel 32, Bill Hill for Temple City Star. Thank you so much for keeping our citizens informed. And we have members in our gallery that will be our delegation. So I don't see all of you because Jeff is creating a tall blockade there, but thank you so much for being here. All right, so without further delay, we're going to adopt the agenda and then we'll go to our delegations. Councilor Barnes?
I can motion to adopt the agenda, stay on the eighth day of September 2020.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we're going to give the time to our first delegation, and we have Mr. Ryan Jensen, and we have Mr. Ted Holland. So if you like to come to-
And his father, Lynn.
And his father? Oh, yes, that's right. And his father. Sorry about that. And if you'd like to come to the pulpit there, and I understand that you are going to talk to us about the importance of irrigation water for some large properties in town on the West End. So go ahead.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So we've been in talks with Councilor Brown, Councilor Selk, and Jeff as well. Over in the West End, just as far as the amount of potable water we're using, the cost in the hot summer months for us to water our lawns, it's pretty exorbitant. So we've heard that levee irrigation is possibly feasible to hook up, and we've been in talks to see what we can do as a group to come in and help and aid in any way we can, or what options are available for this. So we've gone and talked to all the guys there, and, you know, we've tried the approach not coming in with pitchforks and, you know, torches and coming into work with you and seeing what we can do, as Councilor Selk is laughing. But, you know, what's the possibility of something like this happening, and what can we as a group do to help with it, is why we're here, and to basically see.
So I think that's quite self-explanatory. There has always been an interest of this council to improve the use of non-potable water for irrigation of large parcels and for other places in town. We had already one line that is functional, but we always wanted to improve that. So as you know, there is always a cost associated to that. I don't know if Jeff gave you a breakdown of what that line could cost.
Yep.
So it's, if I recall, over $300,000 anyway.
Yeah, we thought in that three or $400,000 range.
Around there.
Yeah.
And what we need to figure out is, one, what is a priority that we will put on this project, knowing that there are other demand on the budget, but is still an interest of council? And two, what would be the desire of the group of resident together to work at the level that could allow us to recoup some of the cost?
Yeah, we discussed that, and we were talking about, and we've gone and talked to everybody here, we've got signatures, about us possibly putting in an amount, you know, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, whatever amount we agree to, that would help aid in the project, and it shows that we're serious and we're ready to help get it started.
Right. So that is always a two element we need to look at. And so I'm going to open it to council. If they have questions for you, go ahead, Councilor, and Councilor Court afterward.
This is now directed Jeff. Jeff, lateral K, that irrigation line was cemented in for some reason next to the 12th Street. Can you tell me what's happened with that?
Yes, I can. I met with Levee Irrigation District this morning. There's, I think it's an eight-inch line that goes down there that they're having trouble capping off because of the pressure down there, so it's been cemented in. It's a massive thrust block at the end of it. So that line is available to connect to, and this is a discussion we'll have more thoroughly a little bit later, too. It certainly can be connected to. There are some concerns from Levee Irrigation regarding the amount of volume available through that line when their other agricultural irrigators are also going. However, we think there are some relatively simple methods that could be used to help mitigate that, so for example, timing the watering a little bit. So the biggest demand on that line is actually at night. So that's when the agricultural and the golf course water the most. And so the biggest demands on volume are at night. And also, the other thing that might help, and again, this is all fairly theoretical at this point, but what might help is that if we constrain or limit the size of the irrigation service line to all of the properties within the town. So it doesn't mean everybody in the town has a three-inch line going to their home, right? Because if they all turn on at the same time, that's a tremendous amount of water. But we can regulate to some degree the volume that's required for all of our residential users. So we talked about a couple of those things. The line needs some work. And even all the way, the entire lateral K, some of you, boy, Council of angry Barnes, Councilor Selk, you may remember the partnership of the town with the irrigation district years ago to take a loan and pay the interest on the capital, about $860,000, as I recall, to expand what they call now Phase Two of the lateral K. Irrigation District is interested in piping that all the way back to the main canal, which would mitigate volume issues that they have on this extension. But that would, that may be a partnership that doesn't necessarily, it doesn't need to be tied to this, but it would certainly be something we should look at in context of that.
Could you have a follow-up question?
Yes, secondary to that, water licenses for users. Where does that come in?
So we have 80 acre feet of license on the west side of 12th Street, which we now call the industrial area. The town has 80 acre feet annually there. We have 73 and a half acre feet of water on the east side of 12th, which is now the West Area Structure Plan essentially, which is interesting because we don't own any land there anymore. So the town retained their irrigation rights on that parcel without owning any of the land. So it's not, it's not a textbook water license situation. In fact, as we approach this, it's a good opportunity for us to readdress our water licenses with the irrigation district. But I'm not concerned about there being sufficient license within the irrigation district to supply the development. That's, I think, a non-issue for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Court?
Yeah, this is an old map. I'm just wondering with the numbers, 20-ish, plus whatever develops in there later.
Yeah, exactly.
Twenty-one now, right?
I think we had 21 signatures. There's around 25 plus, we've got 21 signatures.
Yeah, because there's cans right there.
And then whatever, Mike Schaefer would develop and whoever else in there ate.
All right. Any further questions? No. So thank you so much for your presentation. I understand that you are cognizant of the fact that $30,000 for an upgrade will not do. And that's what we had presented at once, and we know that it was not up to our specs. Up to our specs is 10 times more.
Yeah, well, we recognize that, and that's why I approached Councilor Brown and Councilor Selk, you know, it's, you know, we need to do it up to the right measure, right standards and whatnot, and, you know, we're not coming in with guns blazing saying, we need this, here's the money, do it. But, you know, what can we do to try and help this move forward and progress with it?
So thank you so much for your presentation. As I said, council has an interest in improving the use of non-potable water. When it will happen, it's a different story. Okay, so thank you so much, and we will discuss that matter, and Jeff will give you a call.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming. So we don't have our second delegation at this point, so we will carry on with the agenda. Let's go to five adoption of minutes, regular meeting of council of August 11, 2020. Councilor Selk?
I'll move to adopt the minutes, so August 11, 2020.
Thank you. Question or comments? All in favor? Thank you very much. Let's go to six bylaw and policy. So here we have to do a few things in order to keep the meeting going in a proper order. We need to approve the recommendations from CCW for urban renewal policy first, and then regarding the letter for the assessment that we're sending to the MLA. So let's go with the urban renewal policy. What we need to do is direct administration to amend the policy to reflect what we discussed. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend administration to proceed with the renewal, urban renewal policy and bring this draft for the next council meeting, please.
Right. And you will see that that policy is now in your packet.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. So let's go to the letter, read the assessment. As you remember, that one is to let the MLA know that we support AUMA position regarding linear assessment because of its negative impact on municipalities, especially on small one, regarding the education requisition and the policing cost. Councilor Selk?
I'd like to move that we send the letter that's been drafted to MLA SCOW regarding our support of AUMAs position on linear assessment.
Okay.
And I know this is really splitting hairs. I need you to ratify the recommendation from CCW first.
Yeah.
And then-
Yeah.
I know it's minor, but-
No, no, you're correct. It's what I said, that being in, yeah.
I'll make that recommendation.
No, well, Councilor Selk could amend what he said, so you will do the letter after. Councilor Selk, can you amend it?
Sure. I'd like to move that we adopt the recommendation from CCW to send a letter to MLA SCOW.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. So hang on to your guns, Councilor Court, I'll get back to you. So six B, Carriage House Theater tax exemption. It's a complex story there, but if you could see, according to the MGA and according to COPTER, any organization that deals with arts or museum is, has a right to receive an exemption, a tax exemption. So at this time, all what we're discussing is a tax exemption. Councilor Brown?
I make a motion to, sorry, I just, I make a motion to approve the tax exemption for the Carriage House Theater for, I guess my question is for-
Three years.
Three years.
For three years.
That's our recommendation.
Yeah, that is what the MGA says we can do. Questions? Councilor Selk?
I agree completely with Councilor Brown's motion. My only question is, is it not possible to have all the theater groups work together and use one facility?
Councilor Selk, that is an excellent question that we have brought to those two groups, back and forth. It'll come a time where I think, by necessity, due to budget restriction, they might need to do that. So you want to follow up with that thought?
Just, I guess, if I might, mayor, a further comment. Because the Carriage House Theater is the beneficiary of the tax exemption, perhaps they could be more open and flexible with the other theater groups in terms of theater time in their facility, because from what I see from the background information, they do have some resources available to them, so perhaps they would be more amenable to the other two groups because we are giving them a tax exemption.
I can tell you that they have worked together on props and clothing and stuff like that, but I don't know the extent.
Okay, just one last comment, then. The reason I bring this up is it would be really nice if we could have them not use the auditorium in the Civic Center for Cartston Community Theater and use the Carriage House Theater for their productions, because, I mean, it creates an inconvenience for the gymnastics club and others who want to use the gymnasium here at the Civic Center, and they end up taking down and setting up and taking down equipment.
Okay.
And they could use one facility that's getting a tax exemption.
Yeah, you make some interesting and good points. Thank you for bringing that up. Councilor Barnes, Councilor-
I have some information, background information of the reason why they don't.
Well-
I was involved in it, because I was the PR director for two seasons, and it happened to be the one season, one of those seasons I was there. The Carriage, the community theater went in there, and they, I'm not saying they would do that now, I'm just saying back then, they come in like they owned the theater, and they started drilling holes through the cinder block, which was a, which was structural in nature. And when they were told they weren't supposed to do that, they got their, they got bent out of shape and all upset, we can do whatever we want. And they had to remind them that, hey, this is a foundation, it's owned by the foundation, you're here to lease it under the good graces, but if you're not going to cooperate, and then you're not going to be able to use it anymore. And they refused to cooperate, and so therefore they were asked to leave and not use it anymore to they could come back and work within the parameters, because they were taking liberties, and that's why. So it's been a while.
It's an interesting point. Councilor Van Green?
Jeff, in the, in the waiving of Councilor Brown's motion, or in the waiving of the tax exemption for the motion, have we received the proper documentation, like the financial statements and so forth, in the past?
In the past, we have.
So, yes, they've been generally compliant. This application-
Is not complete.
It's minor, so we didn't get their last annual return. What that tells us is whether or not they're still registered as a nonprofit, which I'm fairly comfortable they are. I don't suspect that's an issue. And the financial statement is actually a year dated, and I'm not completely sure why that is. They've had lots of time to have a 2019 financial. Now, again, I don't think that leaves a lot of ambiguity on the table as far as their nonprofit status or their being a going concern. I think both are still supported. It wasn't precisely in this application what was prescribed, but it was close. But in the past, we've been, we've been receiving, Alana has been compliant with what we've asked for in the past. Thank you.
Yeah, a similar question I had of the meeting, too. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any more questions regarding it? All in favor? Thank you very much. And maybe we could have administration follow up on those proper documentation.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
And working together? And I have been on that.
Yeah, also with that point. Six C, the draft of the urban renewal policy amendment. So we have, earlier on, made the recommendation regarding the urban renewal policy for administration to come up with an amendment. The amendment is here in this packet, so thank you for administration for having done such a quick turnaround on this. Do you want to talk to it possibly, Jeff?
Yeah, sure. I just want to make sure from council that it represents the discussion last week. So what I heard was that properties that are currently vacant could still qualify if there, if we had evidence there was an improvement there, and we didn't have evidence that they were subject to previous initiatives-
Right.
Right.
Or any kind of granting.
Right.
So that's really, it was a one-paragraph amendment.
Yeah.
I tried not to overcomplicate it too much, so as long as that captures your intention, I think it would be good to go.
Councilor Selk?
Okay, Jeff, I only have one quibble.
Sure.
In item two of that paragraph-
Yep.
The property has not been the recipient of any funding from the town. Can I suggest for this council that maybe the property owner, the property may have been the recipient, but the current property owner may be different than the property owner when the property may have received that. So therefore, the property, current property owner should not necessarily be impeded from-
Penalized.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Penalized.
I see what you're saying.
It's, actually, could make for an interesting debate, because-
Because is that the property?
Councilor Barnes may seem to maybe feel a little different about that if someone historically got the money. But I see, I, I'd be game either way, but it's an interesting debate. If you're all okay with that, we can do a quick amendment.
All right, so let's talk about that. It's a subtle difference, but it's an important difference.
Yep.
The difference is that the, if I understand what you're trying to say, Councilor Selk, is that the previous property owner may have received the subsidy, but the property since has sold, and the new owner would like to benefit from the subsidy.
Correct.
Councilor Barnes' position was, the property has received the subsidy, therefore it should not be given twice. Councilor Barnes, you want to talk to it? Councilor Court?
Just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So that's, that is an issue, and I appreciate what you're saying, Councilor Selk. I understand that. And maybe the problem was, is that when the program first came out, there were no strong guidelines as to how the money was to be used. Back then, it was like, you got this money and you did whatever you want. There wasn't a, there wasn't that issue whether you had to build or whatever. They tore it down and they got the money. I mean, it cost them a few bucks to tear it down, but they didn't build. And I know because my house, I sold the house to a fellow.
You spoke about that last time.
And he never did anything to improve the property at all. And at the time, after I sold it, I thought, this doesn't sit right with me. There should be some kind of guidelines. And then it was probably about eight or nine years later that the council at the time saw the, they understood, hey, this is a, this is free money. We shouldn't be just giving away money like that, right? And so they changed the parameters that they had to have. They got half down, half when they tore it down, and the rest of it when they built. And it's changed again since then. So I feel, yeah, I'd like to see those properties build and we collect taxes, and maybe that's the way we go. I, I'm, I thought about it, and I don't have as much problem with it as I did-
Okay.
Because I understand that we want to grow.
Right, so you're not contrary to the amendment?
No, I'm not.
Okay, fine.
Councilor Barnes, answer my question.
Okay, all right. So here is the amendment that could be done to that, to that number two for administration is to maybe change the fact that it is not the property, but the owner of the property.
So councillors, if you go back out to your OneDrive, there's a document now that says, it's at the very bottom, council policy, council policy, urban renewal policy two. If you open that, it has the amendment in it.
Okay.
So we can, we can debate on that one. The only difference, mayor, is I just put current property owner instead of property.
Okay, so that's fine. Councilor Selk, would that satisfy? Yeah.
Absolutely.
Your interest in seeing that changed?
So you've got that fixed there?
Thanks. I think we will not, so do you want us to vote first on the modification, and then, or are we good to go?
No, I think I've just uploaded a new draft, and by all means-
So it's fine, so we go with the current draft?
Yeah, if you're okay with it.
Hi, so all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so it's 25 after, but I can see our new delegation. We have Mike Schaefer and Jim Schaefer there, and we are going to give them the chance to-
Can I preface their presentation quickly, mayor?
Please, go ahead.
As I put in the background, and I know this goes back a ways, and with COVID, we didn't have delegations for a while, and we had, you'll recall, we had some, we've had some long discussion over a number of meetings about this notion of, how does the town attempt to put security against development agreements or against developers to ensure, one, that the development agreements are met, conditions are met, and two, that the, any infrastructure that we might take from developers is of a sufficient quality and standard that it doesn't cause us problems down the road. And so we've had a number of discussions around topics of security deposits, performance bonds, letters of credit, a number of different things that we can entertain in order to have security for contractors. But we've also had the discussion that looking to be too aggressive on that may cause undue financial strain upon the developer and cause them to not develop. And we want to find that fine line somewhere, and so we've asked Jim and Mike to come and speak. One, that Jim has been involved in a recent development, well, and has over history a lot of them, but recently with Third Avenue, with Underground and Roadway, and then Mike is proposing a large subdivision, which will require significant infrastructure that the town will eventually take as well. And so we thought they would have a good perspective to speak to this idea of, how do you find the balance of protecting the town's interest in a development, but not handcuffing the developer so difficult financially that it makes it difficult for them to proceed? So I'm hoping that's what you came prepared to speak to, by the way?
Sort of.
Okay, all right, well, I'll take sort of. Okay, I'll take sort of, and we'll see where it goes.
All right.
I will, I will talk on that a little bit.
Okay, so Mike-
I'm not curious what the meat of the matter is, Mike.
Well, Mike, come on, and Jim-
It's all yours then, let's see.
I don't know who is the presenter, is that Mike, is that Jim, is that both of you?
No, Nolan.
Nolan?
Nolan did talk to me about that, but he also said also on what can be done to help with affordability of development. So I've got here, I was here a year and a half almost, or a year and a half since I was here, proposing a subdivision. I've done my homework, nothing's happened, don't know if anything will happen, and I've got, can I hand these out, or does someone have to?
I can hand it out for you, you want? Do you want to keep talking?
I'll keep one of them. So I've done up a list of what it costs to subdivide my property, and I've got two prices on there. I've got one from, the estimate from the engineer who designed the subdivision, well, yeah, the services and everything like that. And then I have one where I've gone out and got some prices done. So-
Mike, can I interject on something real quick? I think, I just want to be a bit cautious here. We have the financial information of a third party, so Mike is free to disclose whatever he wants, but I would just ask you to keep it. I recognize and respect that our media's in here, but as councillors, don't volunteer the information. Mike can, Mike can disclose whatever he was comfortable with, but you're dealing with proprietary third-party information, so just be cautious with it unless you're totally okay with it.
I don't care.
Okay.
Part of the reason I'm being open with this right now is, the last time we were here, we, we had kind of talked, and I have talked with Nolan, maybe even Jeff, about some things, you know, with ways the town can help develop so we can grow the community. And- And one of the ways, things that I had talked about was if there's anything the town can do to help, as in put in services, cave yet the lot till it sells. The town didn't like that idea. I don't remember if we talked about it in council or if it was Nolan, because the town takes that on and the developer makes all the money. Well, so if you look over those numbers right there, the first page is the numbers that the engineer has given me as an estimate. Is Nolan here today? I was gonna ask him. I don't know, does anyone know how many lots have been built in Karst, or how many houses have been built in Karst in the last few years?
Two or three.
Four?
Two or three or four.
Three, four? Okay.
About that may going up right now, isn't it?
Yeah, I think there's two or three right now. The reason I bring that up is I can't sell a lot in Karst for a lot of money right now. Karst is not booming. So, I go and I could do a subdivision with 11 lots. Now, these lots are a half acre lot, they're a larger lot than normal. I might be able to get $75,000 for one of those lots. Now, using the engineer's pricing there, it's going to cost me $81,000 to develop, per lot to develop. It's not very feasible, in my opinion, to go ahead with that. Now, on the last page is my numbers, what I've gone out and got prices for materials, labor to do things, and my prices are still at $68,000 a lot. So, if I can sell for $75,000, I make $7,000 a lot, which is not a lot. 11 lots, that's $77,000, but it might take me 10 years to make that back. I mean, how long have Ellison's lots been for sale? You know, things like that. It's not a very feasible investment of money. Now, Nolan brought up the fact that the town is looking at now requiring some type of security or a bond. I've put that down there as a $20,000 for bonding. That's if I get bonding from a bond company. Now, as a contractor in town that does development and building, I believe I am the only one in Karst that is, that can get bonded right now. I've talked with Ken Wild, he can't do it, doesn't really want to worry about going through the paperwork, the money, the amount of work that it takes each, every few months to continue getting that bonding. So, I'm not sure exactly what town is thinking as far as a security when it comes to doing this sort of thing. But every little thing adds to that cost for development. And right now, that's why I brought those figures to you, so you can see for yourself what it costs to develop. It's not feasible to do it. If we were booming and we were building 10 or 12 houses a year, you know, and a guy could get $80,000 a lot, you know, maybe. I might end up with a, I'm going to build my house there one day, but I might end up there with an eight acre, acreage because of the cost to do it. Now, I've still been talking with Nolan in different ways, but the security part of it, and I talked to Nolan about it, says the town is just making it to the point where we can't do it. I know Ellison's would never do it again in Karst, talking with Matt about it. And that's why they've sold off the remainder land they have. It's just, I don't know. I thought I could make a go of it and I'd still like to try, but I would like to figure out a way that we can make it more affordable, so, because I do believe that, well, especially for what I want to do with large lots, I do believe that there's a market for that, but got to get to that point. So, as far as the security goes, I think that there could be different ways around that. Usually when you hire, and maybe each subdivision's a little different, but usually when you hire an engineer, they do oversee it a little more, take a little more responsibility for it. When I started to do this one, before the town had brought up any of the bonding or security, Nolan and Brandon had told me, you know, hey, we, Brandon said, you don't cover anything until we look at it, which is a smart thing to do as far as coming from the town's perspective, because they can come and look at it, Bart or Brandon or whoever, and see that it's done properly before it's covered up, backfilled, hey. That, to me, would be the number one thing I would do. It wouldn't take that long. Might take an hour, you know, out of a day every two weeks to, for him to go up there or Bart to look at the services or the water lines, make sure things are put in properly before it's, that'd be the first thing that I would suggest is done. They have the experience, they have the knowledge of what it's supposed to look like. I mean, the town does a lot of that, so. The bonding, like I say, just adds cost. Have you ever had to go after a bonding company?
We have not, thankfully.
I don't think it's as, I don't think it's as easy as it's made out to be, because they turn around and go after the contractor first. And if the contractor's not going to do anything about it, then they're going to step, I guess they will step in. But I don't think that's the answer right now, but maybe it is.
So, Mike, I think Jeff wants to say something.
I wanted to speak to bonds a bit. If you don't mind maybe this being a little more casual than we would normally be, but, and I wanted to ask a question about the bonding, so I understand, but bonding's very interesting, because I agree with Mike, not everybody can get one, first of all. So, the bonding agency has to gauge their risk, first of all, whether they want to bond you. They're essentially providing warranty on your behalf, right? And so, the last bond issue we ran into is with the pool. And so, we did a very large project and in our, in our paperwork, we were demanding a bond from Acapulco. And they came to us and said, look, here's what the cost of the bond landed in the project. And on that project, it, you know, 1.3 million or something, it was significant. And what they did is they requested if they could do two things. They said, well, one thing is, we won't, we will progress bill, so we won't bill you until you've been on site and seen that we've done what we're billing you for. So, they were trying to take the performance piece of the bond out. So, they weren't going to bill us for anything they hadn't accomplished and wasn't on site. And then they also agreed to put up a letter of credit, because the interest on the letter of credit over the term of the project was significantly lower than the cost of the bond. And they were also in a position, they had cash to put up, which isn't common for everyone, especially if you have to extend yourself. But what I was curious to, Mike, if I might ask, on a $20,000 bond in this case, what value of project are you basing that on? And does it contain a performance and a warranty portion, or is it just like a warranty portion?
No, usually the bonds that we get, I mean, I've never got a bond for a development.
Okay.
My bonds have all been for buildings, construction. Usually they're a 50-50 performance and labor.
Okay, okay.
That's usually what's asked for.
And that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that for sure. Okay. Okay, thanks. I just wanted to get an idea of what that value was for this scale of project.
Yeah. And I realize, I think maybe it was Nolan, or maybe it was talking with Dad, that you could put up a letter of credit. I don't know how much that would be on a $800,000 project. But you have to have that cash available to do that. You know, it's not a matter of, you know, going to the bank and saying, hey, I want a loan so I can put up a, you know, a letter of credit, doesn't work that way. I mean, I have to have one for new home warranty and, but it really will limit who can develop in Karst. If the town implements it and sticks to it, it will limit who can go ahead and do that. So.
Mike, thanks for your presentation. It is always good to hear from people who are in the business to understand the issue better. And there is no doubt that every time you increase the costs upfront, it makes it more difficult to develop. I totally understand that. So, are there, are there questions from council? Thank you.
Mike, with the new building codes, if I understand right now, that you're on the hook for seven years for a new home warranty? Is that correct?
Ten.
Comment?
Ten years.
Ten, ten years now. So, when I look at this sentence here, it says, "A key to find a place where the town is protected against inferior development." That cost is kind of covered under your, under your new home warranty, isn't it?
No. Well, yeah, nothing underground would be covered under.
That wouldn't be covered.
That's just the construction of the building.
Okay, okay, well, that's what I was, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Well, it's a structure, that's all. Counselor Bantry, Counselor Brown?
Mike, you've got quite a figure here for the cost of the land. Is that purchasing land from the town or from a private?
That's the price I paid for this land.
From the town?
No, from a private seller.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Brown?
So, I don't know a lot about buildings, so just bear with me. So, in other communities, because you have, you've built in other communities.
Yep.
How does Karst get in the game for having more builds here, other than economic growth and development, having more business here, I get that, but are other communities getting your business, getting more people? Like, what can we, what is your expectation of council to be able to move more building to happen within our area?
Well...
As you say, you, sorry, you say that Atkins wouldn't build and go through this again.
Well, Ellison's wouldn't.
Or Ellison's, okay.
I don't know if Gordon would again either, but...
Sorry. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just curious. Why, how can we?
The problem we have here is Karst is kind of at the end of the road.
Yeah.
You know, Raymond is a bedroom community. They have a lot of development going on. Now, McGrath gets a fair bit, because they're close to Lethbridge. You look at Pincher Creek, you know, they service, they have a lot more industry, they service the pass, you know, and people pass through Karst, and we're at the end of the road. And anything we can do to help keep costs lower for people, I think, is a bonus. Now, I've talked with Nolan multiple times about off-site levies, municipal reserves, you know, and the fees that the town's charging, and they just come back and, you know, it's, well, that's what all these communities charge, everybody charges that. And I don't think that right now, when we're building two homes a year, that we should be looking at that kind of thing. I mean, I have 11 lots up there that are large home resident, or large lot residential. When those get filled up, you'll be, you know, the town's going to collect $55,000 to $65,000 a year in taxes. They're not going to fill up at the, what it costs to subdivide and to develop. And so, I think that town, the town needs to look at the bigger picture of things. When we build two houses a year, we're going nowhere. We can't bring, we can't bring costs down, we can't, you know, we're having, I mean, I can't complain. Work has been good for me, I stay busy, but I know that there's other, other people, you know, you can't, you can't build one or two homes a year and keep every contractor in Karst going.
Counselor Selk, Counselor Court?
So, Mike, just to make sure I understand where you're coming from, the function of development in the town of Karst is more related to the geography as opposed to the difficulty of building versus other towns?
Well, I think that's part of it. You know, we don't have the industry that's bringing people to Karst. We had a lot of people coming to Karst before they built the temple in Calgary. You know, we built a lot of homes prior to 2008. And we need to find something that will bring them back again. And if we can make things more affordable, I believe that will, that will help some. We are finding, I mean, we have seen a few more people look from out of town, looking, you know, around. I know Dad's showing people homes that are from out of town, a little bit more, I think, but it's just tough.
Okay.
So, just a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
So, Mike, you've built, you've built in other communities, you've built in McGrath, you've built in Raymond.
I've built in Lethbridge.
You've built in Lethbridge. So, is it, I guess what I'm getting at, is it that much more complicated in Karst than in those other?
It's not more complicated to build. The building process for a home itself is identical. Lethbridge is a little different because of city things. But Raymond, McGrath, the county, Waterton, it's kind of very similar.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, we should be, and we have been focused on economic development in terms of doing what we can to bring business and tourism to town, but in terms of the actual building process, we're not that far out from other communities?
No, like when I get a contract to build a home, I see Nolan, I get a development permit, I get new, I have to go get new home warranty, get energy review, and then I go to Park Enterprises in Lethbridge and get a building permit. That's the same process if I build in McGrath, if I build in Raymond, same thing. So, there's no difference there as far as building goes.
Counselor Court, Counselor Brown?
I understand your concerns, Mike. It's the frequency of building here, like Raymond will probably build 10 or 15 houses a year, because they're close, and McGrath would maybe half of that. And it's also the bond. So, is the big issue, I'm looking at the sheet, is you don't like the bond?
Well, Nolan asked me to come and talk about the security, the bond part, and he also said I could talk about other ways that we can look at making development more affordable. And I think myself, I mean, the bond is 20,000 bucks, you know, so you're a couple thousand dollars a lot, you know, but if we, if, right now, and I know this is not what the town wants to hear, but the municipal reserve and off-site levies, you know, now there's another $43,000 or $44,000 that's added on. And there's these costs, which Nolan has explained to me what they're for, and the other communities have them, I always get that, and they might have them, but they're also building 10 times the homes we build, you know, which will help with that. Right now, until Karst gets to a point where we can build even six or seven or eight homes a year, I think we need to do what we can to promote any kind of development.
Counselor Brown?
I was going to say, with your performance bond and those other communities, they have those there, right?
I don't know.
But is it because they're building more that?
I don't know if they have that. That's, I haven't developed in, like, in those towns. I've just built. Now, as far as performance and labor bonds go for me, most, all of them that I ever pull are for, not for homes, but usually commercial work, like the bathroom I built in Waterton, or jobs for the church that are large, or, you know, things like that. That's usually what those bonds are for.
Okay.
So, when I build a house, we never get bonds.
Mike, can I ask you a question? We're looking at the issue of attracting people to get to those lots. So, you say we only have built two or three. So, my question is, is there then an interest from people to move to Karst to acquire a lot, that is a larger lot, and build on it right now? Or is that just the nature of the times where we are in a low, for our town, maybe not as desirable as McGrath or Raymond that are closer to Lethbridge? Is that where the issue is? And then, would the changes in, in whatever we do as council change anything? Would that attract anybody any quicker?
Whether some, excuse me, whether something like that attracts people here, I'm not sure.
Right.
I know right now that if I had my subdivision done, developed, I could probably have three of the lots sold. I have interest, because there are people that want a nice half acre lot, they can put a shop in the backyard, you know, they can, there's quite a few people that want that. Not everybody does. And I've had people talk to me about it, but I can't do anything without spending... spending the money and, you know, and that's where I think it comes down to, like, they might be, I might have a local person, in fact, well, I have a couple of local people who've talked to me, well, they're going to put their house up for sale, which is going to be on a smaller lot, someone from out of, out of town, good chance that they could buy that house. You know, they're not going to put their house up on the market without having somewhere to go or a plan in mind, so.
Thank you. Any more? Councillor Brown, Councillor Jeff?
Actually, Jim Schaefer's hand's been up, he's been wanting to speak for a bit.
Please come out, come on to the.
I don't think she can see you.
These levies that, uh, that Mike has referred to, uh, I don't know, I haven't looked at them all because he's the one that's doing it, but I'm just, if you don't sell lots, you're not going to collect the levies, right? So why are we charging them? Because we're not selling any. Just because other communities are charging them, maybe we should step back and say, you know, we got to make this look better, you know, for developers if they're going to develop. So, I, I mean, if nobody develops, you don't collect the levies anyway, so what's the difference?
Okay, that's a point. Councillor Brown?
Stay. So my question is to you, Jim, so you have a lot to do with real estate in Cartston as Councillor Barnes does, my question to you would be, out of, and we're speaking generally, out of the homes that have been going within the last year, let's say, are the majority of the houses that are selling within Cartston from people coming from other areas? Or are they Cartston residents getting bigger, right, bigger houses, bigger lots, or, um, I want a smaller house now because I'm an empty nester?
With, with, with my experience, mine is different than Dennis's, the first half of this year, or the first five months were really, really slow, slowest I've ever had in thirty-five years.
I'm sure.
And, but the, lately, I've been getting, um, probably fifty percent of my sales have been people from out of town.
Came here.
You know, Red Deer, Fort McMurray.
To retire here, to what here?
Yeah, not to retire, not to work. Most of them are retiring, but.
Thank you.
I just sold my house to someone from Calgary.
Yeah.
Older?
A little older, still has a daughter, or a, well, granddaughter living with him, going to school here. So.
You know, I look back, I look back at, at the Ellison's who spent a lot of money out there, and I'm sure they didn't make anything. And, um, I first had those lots listed at ninety thousand, I had
I know.
ten lots sold conditionally for ninety thousand, but they couldn't perform, get them completed. And then they announced the temple and they just all fizzled it right out. And, you know, they still have a number of lots on that first phase that's for sale. And they're down to, what are they, forty-two thousand for the north side and fifty-two for the ridge side? So, I mean, that's way cheap, way cheap for, for a building lot. And they're just trying to, they're just trying to get some of their money back. And this is the, this is the scary thing about developing, here in town, you put all this money in and you never know when you're going to get it back.
Yeah.
So if you don't do that, then, I don't know, we just don't have, we just do infill building every once in a while, where a new house gets torn down, somebody decides to build there. That's what I'm saying, I, I, I just think if there was some way that some of these fees could be cut, I think, when I, when I came to you a year or so ago, uh, last year, to talk about, when I was talking about the land over at the, uh, school there, that I wanted that strip, I offered to pay the same price, but what I wanted to pay, I didn't want to have to pay all the levies, I said, I'll pay you the same price I was going to buy it for. But I, I only want to pay what it actually costs to hook up. I don't want to have to pay all the extra fees because then I got to charge more for that building, and the cost of building right now is really extremely high. He mentioned some of the things that he has to do that we never did ten, fifteen years ago. We didn't have to do that, but it's changed a lot.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Jeff, you wanted to say some?
I just thought I wanted to mention a couple of comments that were made, um, I, I think it's important we're clear, this isn't about what Mike actually builds as far as the home, this is the road in the underground, right? And so that's what we're concerned about, and I agree a hundred percent with Mike that our inspection processes have to be far more robust, and that mitigates the risk to a large degree.
I know.
So I don't think, and I've never, I, I think we'd be clear on this, I've never suggested ever that, you know, if Mike's quote for roads and, and the undergrounds is over five hundred thousand, we're looking for security equal to five hundred thousand. Right, we realize that would be, well, again, for a guy that can get a bond, it's a little more manageable than if we're looking for dollar-for-dollar security. There, there's no way, I don't know of anyone that could put up dollar-for-dollar security and still have the money to build the development, right? That, that's just too onerous, but. So we can bring that number down as we, as we make our inspection processes more robust, and that's something we've been working on that's getting better. Um, Brandon's been working on that, so I think, you know, it's a, it's a point well made, but, you know, we, we just have to be cautious that, that we're not, we're not taking in utility, that we're immediately now working.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's going to cause those homeowners grief over, over the time, we just want to make sure that it's done well, and inspection can mitigate a ton of it. No question about that. And, and the other thing too is, um, I, I, I don't ever think we've talked about, and, and Mike mentioned a couple of times, and I, maybe I'm pushing back here just a little bit, with, with off-site levies, and we went through this pretty thoroughly a year or so ago. I don't know, time flies, could have been a couple of years ago now. I don't think we're doing it because other towns are doing it. The fact that other towns are doing it exists, certainly. But remember, the principle behind the levies, and, and Jim asked a good question of why the levies is, it's because we incur costs on behalf of this developer, that you are trying to decide if you let the ratepayer cover it or let the developer cover it, and it's not a perfect science, I don't think anyone's ever said it's a perfect science, but that's one of the, the main driving force behind the levy generally.
If the ratepayer, if, if the ratepayer is, is taking over some of that cost, there'll also benefit from the development, because they're going to have an increased cost in taxes that will offset some of the mill rate increase.
At some point they will, and each development's different as far as what that return on investment looks like for the town or the ratepayer, whoever's paying. For sure, I don't debate that, Jim. I just don't know the timing on each investment.
Right.
This was a discussion ten years ago, that, uh, the problem with it is that you may develop, we may put in services for fifteen lots and they don't sell for fifteen years. But the, but the ratepayer has already paid for that, now they, they're not collecting anything back for fifteen years unless somebody buys it and starts paying taxes. I think that was the gist of the discussion several years ago, is that we don't know how fast those lots are going to sell, yet the town's spending the money to put the services in there.
I think the town used to do that, and I think it was when Ellison's team wanted to do their development, they wanted the town to get out of that.
Agreed.
And, and the town went ahead and said, okay, we're going to get out of it, we're not going to do any more developing. However, they did do some, uh, development up there for Shaw on Seventh Street where they caveated the lots, if I understand. And when they were sold, they were paid back to the town.
Correct.
I understand what you're saying, it's just.
Yeah.
And I would agree with what you said there about the Ellison change and how the town did it too. I would agree with that, yeah.
So that was a change of the way the town approached development of lots. All right, so are there any more question or need for clarification? We understand what you said. What you said is that the cost of the developer are impeding development in this town, in your opinion. And what can the town do in order to help developer? In your sense, that's what you're saying?
And, yeah, and, and the reason I brought these figures was, like I said, I don't remember if it was at the last council meeting, I was here a year and a half ago, or if it was with Nolan and, and Jeff. And we had talked about, well, can the town help out, can the town put the services and caveat the lot, and it wasn't liked because, well, the town's going to do this and take on the debt, but the developer's going to make all the money. That was the comment that was made, and I wanted to show you, the developer's not making a lot of money here. You know.
But you're not in the business of losing money either?
No, you're not, but that's why I say, like, every little bit counts, and so when you add on a bond now or a security on top, and you have all the fees and levies, every little bit adds it up to where it's not feasible to do.
But I think that there are probably places where we can help as with inspection done internally rather than externally, so, yeah.
But just to be clear, there is nothing wrong with making money.
No.
I mean, if I make a land development, I want to make some money on it, I mean, we're in the business.
You should.
We're in the, I personally, I'm in the business to make money. If I'm going to pour my heart and soul into something, we shouldn't, I, I just don't want it, I just don't want this, it to be felt like
Well, it's a normal thing.
That we have an expectation, expectation on you to not make money. Oh my goodness, I want you to make money, I want you to do well, because if you do well, then you sell that, then we're collecting taxes on it as a taxpayer, that makes me giddy, because that means my taxes are going to go down, so all of a sudden you're my guy.
Yes, but that wasn't the expectation I took from it, it was that the town's taking on
Right.
the risk of caveating the lots and holding on to them while I
Yeah, no.
make the money. That's, that's what it's.
There is an understanding there.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. All right, so thank you so much for your presentation, council will discuss that again. And Jeff will kind of stay in touch with you. Okay, thanks so much.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Jim.
Thanks so much, much appreciated. All right. So I better go back to my paper. Sixteen. Council, uh, approved capital request. As you may have noticed, the municipal affairs has given a municipal stimulus program. No, I'm, I'm wrong, sorry. Okay, so put me straight.
We got to fix stuff.
Okay, so that is about, that is about the sewer line, the hundred fifty feet of sewer line, is that a hundred fifty meter?
Do you want me to speak to that, ma'am?
Okay, so in Lions Park, all right, so go ahead.
So sixty, um, we've run into, I mentioned, I think, at the last meeting how we found a small sinkhole by shortstop in Lions Park. Well, that turned into, we have a hundred and fifty meters of wooden storm sewer run from manhole to manhole in Lions Park. Now, the interesting thing here is we had no idea we had wooden storm sewer. Um, in fact, it's quite interesting because if you go back to the days of wooden anything, there wasn't a lot of underground storm sewer infrastructure at this time, so this was maybe revolutionary for its time. Um, on our books, it's concrete, in fact, is what it says, but when we put the camera down it, it's wood all the way from, from, and the whole top of it, all the way underground, is gone. So, so you can see the soil almost all the way down that length of pipe. And so as we were, as the guys were flushing it, they were pulling soil down and it was starting to cave in. This is one of those where, I'm going to be frank, we don't have a lot of option but to replace it.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, aside from some pylons during baseball season in the, in the field, I don't think it's a reasonable expectation to leave it. And that is the storm that comes all the way down fourth and collects everything down fourth and then sends it to the creek. It's, it's simply, in my opinion, not something we can ignore.
It's on Lions Park property?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a catch basin at the end of the parking on Fourth, and then it goes right down the hill, and there's a, just as the hill goes up, you can see it, there's a manhole that sticks out of the ground. From that manhole to basically behind the batter's cage is a wood storm main.
Go down that laneway, pass the.
It runs diagonal across the baseball field.
There's a pitcher.
It runs from right to left field in Lions Park.
There's a pitcher in your back.
All right, so essentially what we need is to find sixty thousand dollar out of our reserve, so Councillor Self.
Let, uh, move that we approve sixty-four thousand out of council-approved capital to come from account four dash ten dash two six zero to be applied to account two dash three seven dash seven six two storm sewer capital.
Thank you. Any comments? I'm sorry, councillors, leaves you thirty-six thousand bucks. All in favor? Thank you, we need to get it fixed and fixed before the winter.
This is the right time to do it.
Yeah. All right, let's go on to seven. Now comes the municipal stimulus program funding. Uh, the government has given each municipality a little boost in finances, but it has many restrictions. And the restrictions are that this project has to be a project that we, we wouldn't have done otherwise. So it has to be a new project. Therefore, you can see the list of options that we have. There is anywhere from utilities as a twinning of the sewer line, as a new filtration for the water treatment plant. Uh, there is two projects for the water treatment plant for that matter. There is then some recreation issue such as, well, recreation. The golf course, as Hall Sixteenth, that needs to be repaired. And there's a few other things that are listed there. So we need to make a decision. And we need to also understand where there are possibility of funding for other, uh, for some of the projects that could come out from some of the money. So we're going to let Jeff talk and then Councillor Bangry, if you don't mind.
Uh, all I wanted to mention is while we assemble the list for you, it is not bound by that list. We just looked at what are some things we've kicked around that seem eligible as per the criteria that we have now, but, but I'm not suggesting you can only choose one of seven. You know, it could, we can also combine the MSP with other sources of funding, and we don't have to have the project completed until the end of twenty twenty-one. So in combination with our, um, budget discussions this fall, we could potentially apply portions of MSP to any number of additional projects, and then combine them with tax funding, reserves, MSI, federal gas tax funds, et cetera. We simply have to apply to the projects we wish to do in a month, well, three weeks. So we have to send in what we would like to do for the total allocation. But, but we have discretion, it, it, it's not just, well, we must spend all this on this project and it's done.
Okay.
It depends how creative we wish to try and get.
Councillor Bangry, do you mind me asking a question?
Uh, go ahead.
Okay, so Jeff, here's a question that I have for you as the administrator. There are some projects there that we know could not get money from other source even when we tried. For example, the twin sewer line, we could not manage to get other source of funding but on taxes at the time.
And we fit the resiliency fund, we were turned down consecutive years on that project, yeah.
So, to me, there is maybe the need to look at projects where we know we could never get any funding from other sources because we've been rejected or because we cannot find any grant that would ever help us come near money. The twin line, for sure, we know we need it, and yet we know we cannot find money for it anywhere else. Are there other projects inside there that have the same issue?
The twinning of the sewer line may, if we chose to, for example, if we chose to forego uh, sanitary sewer replacements in any given year, so we did Seventh and Sixth, Seventh Avenue, Sixth Street this year. It may qualify for federal gas tax funding. We've just, you know, it's something that it's working, we know we need to do it someday. Uh, you know, it's one of those, and heaven forbid it fails on us in the short term, and then we're really scrambling. Um, and I don't think it will, by the way, I don't have any indication it will. So I think on some of these, we probably can find some funding, but we have been prioritizing other sanitary, in this case, over this one. So we can use federal gas tax for paving, we can use MSI, well, federal gas tax and for some of our utility and our MSI.
Okay. Can, can you maybe?
It failed in other applications on the twinning, and we failed in other applications on the storm drainage lift stations.
Okay.
We tried that, I think, two or three years until resiliency funding went away.
Yeah.
And, and they didn't like that one very much. Um, we, we were trying to fit a bit of a, a square pagan round hole on that one, I'm, I'm not debating that, but we were trying to find something. So, you know, there's projects like the tennis court, for example, which I'm pretty sure we could probably get fifty percent CFEP on that in the year we choose to do it, but we haven't prioritized using fifty percent of tax funding for the other half, for example.
So for example, Hall Sixteen, let's talk about this. So Hall Sixteen. So for example, hole sixteen, let's talk about this. So hole sixteen is a capital expenditure that we know we need to do sooner than later.
And CFEP and SIP don't like golf courses.
Okay.
Look favorably on golf courses generally. They're intended to be able to raise their own capital through their business operations. Not to say it's impossible, but it's probably not a high success rate. So that one, I don't know what's out there that could supplement that project.
Okay, so that one would be more fitting as a new project with no money coming from anywhere else.
Yeah, it would be a difficult sell to other grant agencies, I think, yes. The irrigation extension, which we'll talk about a little bit more too, that's one that I think we can couple with some other grants. I polled, if I might, ma'am, I polled just before the meeting. FCM has a water conservation community project grant, which is you must show that you can reduce potable water usage by twenty percent in a neighborhood facility or group of facilities. I think we have a strong business case. They're a little bit ambiguous on, the wording is really ambiguous on the amount of cost. I thought it was fifty percent, it is not. There's a percentage that they grant and they'll cover up to eighty percent of the eligible costs. And I've got to get some clarity on that a little bit. It's not that cut and dry, but it's significant anyway. And I think that's one that we could certainly build a good business case for in the irrigation project.
Okay. Now, let's talk about the water treatment plant. You have two projects there. And is there any possibility to get grants or anything from anywhere else to subsidize that?
It's possible. It would gen, probably be at the expense, again, of some of our underground infrastructure year to year.
Okay.
So we would prioritize that over replacing a block of water line, for example.
Okay.
And we could use MSI, gas tax. I'm, I'm sorry, I forget, there's a, there's a provincial water utility one we use under transportation. The name escapes me, but we use it commonly.
And the, the last one that I'm looking at is a storm drainage pond. Now, this one, we talked about that one for the past six, seven years.
It's also what you're gathering levies for in the West area, not to tie in Mike's presentation.
As a mass do, as a mass do in time, because that water is diverting all through the town and not helping matters. So tell me, is that levies, we went nowhere there with that project? Where are we going with that?
You have levies in place. As subdivision happens in that area, we will, we will begin collecting levies as there is development permits on those properties, but as Mr. Schaefer illustrated, he doesn't know the speed as to which that will happen even for his own development. You know, he's not convinced that that's gonna happen in the short term.
So what's a priority in your eyes of having that storm, storm drainage pond in place?
I'm not convinced we're at the density of development that it is, that it is a high priority.
Yeah, right.
The, the further we, the further that development goes on, especially if Mr. Schaefer's development of eleven more lots there, that, that starts to push the issue, but that's not this year or next.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's a ways off.
So from that short discussion, I can see hole sixteen as being the most favorable project to be able to use some of that four hundred sixty four thousand dollar. But that's what I see personally. Councillor Bangle, we wanted to say something, councillor Court.
Jeff, the, you say it's scalable on the storm drainage lift stations. We've had some very good storms, spring storms, where we get optimum flooding down on whatever it is, just off Main Street there.
Yep.
We have businesses involved in that and we have residences involved in that. That is a must, as far as I'm concerned, that we get that under control. What are you talking about scalable?
So in the initial proposal, we had, we had two, we had a lift station right in front of John Bright's house.
Yep.
Kirk's Tire John Bright's. There's one a little further down, I believe, in the intersection of Chief Mountain Gas Sage Management. Believe we had one there. And we were also entertaining something where the old glass to you building, so behind the TD Bank, we have a real problem there, that things become infiltrated. So I think the point of it being scalable is we could do one. We don't have to do the whole. I think, I believe in our first proposal, if I'm not mistaken, and this is going back about five years, I think it was about a seven hundred thousand dollar touch, six hundred and sixty something thousand dollars for all, everything at the time. So I think we were saying, you know, in my opinion, the most acute issue is in front of Kirk's Tire.
Yep.
For example, right? Because that storm drain always surcharges onto that street and so, and it can't get over to the creek. So we could do one, for example, at two hundred and change.
Okay, so that mean we, I mean, if council is interested, it could be hole, hole sixteen and a storm drain, a storm drainage lift station that could almost cover the amount, this extra amount of money. Councillor Court?
Yeah, I've been in town for over thirty years and there has been the occasional flood down there. It's not frequent, maybe every five or ten years, maybe a little more, a little less.
I've had three since I've been here, and I've been here almost thirteen years.
They're all nasty.
Yeah, they're, they're not great.
And, and we keep talking about just underground facilities when we've, need to start focusing a little more, I think, on some overground facilities. I'm, I'm speaking for the golf committee. They'd love to see some of that money going towards a golf club course, clubhouse, which we badly need. We doubled our record this year. So something like that, I could see at least a starting point for some money for a golf, for a clubhouse. I've talked to a lot of people and the, and the current theme is, yeah, a million dollar clubhouse or a course and a ten cent clubhouse. So that's just a thought, and that's coming from the golf committee a little bit, too.
Yeah, I, I think you fix the, the course first, you make it pristine.
You don't need a mansion there.
You need to fix the course first, make it pristine, and then you attract people and then you worry about your clubhouse.
Anyhow.
Councillor Bangle?
I drive around this community a lot, and I mean a lot. And I, I look at John Bright's home down there and he has constantly got a drain out going into the curb. When it storms, he is draining. And there needs to be something done about that, because I'm wondering, in a storm, I'm worried about Kirk Tire, you know, in that storm. I've lived here long enough to see water back right up to Main Street, right under the light. But I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about those businesses and residences that are suffering because of the storm sewers. And, and councillor Court, I think it happens a little bit more often than every five, ten years.
Well, I've had three or four of them, but still.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Jeff, councillor Brown, councillor Barnes?
I just wanted to be clear on the storm. So this, this dewatering system is essentially an overflow manhole
Right.
that then pumps overland downstream to the creek. So that's what it's doing. But I just wanted to speak to it, councillor, because what it won't do is affect groundwater levels around the Bright's home. I mean, they, their, their basement would be lower than the creek as they sit, right? So we're not gonna remedy that. What we're gonna remedy is when that storm drain comes up and shoots out the top, it's gonna first overflow into an additional manhole, which will pump it overland. Because our issue we have in town is our storm drain outlets in high water level are below the water level. And so when all of our underground infrastructure is full, it can't drain with any speed, and so it starts pushing back up manholes upstream. And so this is saying it can always overflow into this auxiliary manhole and be pumped overland. That's the intention, but it, in any other time, it's not going to be lowering groundwater levels, because that all down there is a gravel bed. It was once where the creek was, likely, right? And so we're not going to be able to de-water the groundwater levels of a sufficient volume. And there's very few properties down there with anything below grade, because it's not a residential area. So everybody's on grade. I completely agree that twenty four, twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, we watched Curves Building, Kirk's, we were putting up massive sandbags around those buildings to try and keep that at bay. We have overland trash pumps, we have them, we hook them onto a truck, but it's always a timing issue. So we never get floods at two o'clock on a weekday. It's always at two AM on a Saturday. And so for us to mobilize, we, we have pumps that can pump them out once we're mobilized and manning them. These would be on demand. So they're sitting there waiting, and when the float trips in them, they start pumping. So that's, that's the issue there. Just to be clear on the scope of that project.
Alright, councillor Brown, councillor Barnes?
Okay, so I guess my question is this. So it says total funding allocation, four hundred and sixty four-ish thousand. So it doesn't just mean one project.
Correct.
The projects together can't surpass that, that.
Or, or we're on the hook for the difference.
The balance.
Yeah.
And, and it's not a matter of, so if in fact, say, we wanted to do hole sixteen at two hundred and eighty and we wanted to do a storm drift, drainage lift-ish for whatever money would be left over, they would cover a hun, up to, it's not eighty percent of, it is that maximum.
Four hundred and sixty nine thousand.
Yeah, you have discretion to distribute that four hundred and sixty four thousand.
As you please.
You bet.
Part B is for the community irrigation extension, part C, B, whatever we're calling that, you're saying that if we did not allocate some of this funding towards it, there is other funding. However, you're not confident in the amount.
Well, it's, I'll, I'll read you the verbatim wording, and it's strange. And, and I, they take forty eight hours to respond to your request, by the way, so I don't have it, or?
Put your bread tape, wow.
Yeah, well, this is fidel. It says, the amount, you can, A, well, I'll just read it verbatim, receive a low interest loan of up to five million and a grant up to fifteen percent of the loan, semicolon, cover up to eighty percent of eligible costs. Like, it's worded really poorly, because I'd always understood that Water for Life will just grant you a very large, or sorry, it's not Water for Life, I keep mistaking that. It's the FCM Green Municipal Fund, that they will grant you a large portion of the total project, which if I just take the last portion of that, cover up to eighty percent of eligible costs,
Awesome.
then that's great. But it, it's worded a little funny and so I'm just trying to get some clarity on that. And they have a couple of variations on this fund as well. So I need to have someone contact me and talk about the best fit for it. But I do believe that there would be some additional funding for a project of this nature where we're displacing the use of potable water. I think that's something we would find some uptake on.
Okay, councillor Brown, councillor Bangle?
Hey, I was just gonna say regarding Mr. Bright's place and, and the Kirk's Tire there. And Mr. Bright has spent multiple thousands of dollars to mitigate the flooding. He has four sump pumps going twenty four seven, all year round, because it's a high water table there. But when this flooding comes, it's really, really nasty. And those things never stop. And so they, it would be definitely a, a benefit there. As long as he can keep those pumps going, he can keep ahead of it. But if he doesn't, then, then it's really bad. I mean, he's replaced that basement so many times, and it's very frustrating. I hear it all the time, because I work with him, right? And he just always is saying, I wish the town would do something to help out. He says, Tom and I are constantly fighting this all the time with the situation. So, I mean, I would definitely like to see at least that part of that project be done. And I, and I, I, I think the, it's a toss up in my mind between the twin sewer line and the hole sixteen. I, I know we need that hole sixteen done as well, those, two of those. Those are my top three.
Okay, so I appreciate you putting a priority in that place. Councillor Bangle?
Jeff, I appreciate what's happening when we resurface a road in the fact that six months from the time we put the new pavement down, you don't get my boot. Like I said, where you open it up, repair a line.
We never plan on it.
And, and that's what I appreciate, is the fact that we're not replacing pavement just six months down the road, or even, even six weeks down the road. We have to dig it back up to repair a, a service line. And so are we gonna experience that problem if we do not go into the infrastructure and replace infrastructure on those blocks that we're replacing the road?
Not to oversimplify, we just wouldn't dig them up at all.
We wouldn't do that.
We just wouldn't repave them yet. We would simply postpone them. You know, unless there was an emergent nature where we gotta go in and repair something. But no, I'm not suggesting that we start just paving for the sake of stimulus funding paving, and where it doesn't make sense at all.
I'm not saying that, but, but I'm saying that when we do pave it, can you inspect those lines and give it some kind of a, an age?
We always do. Yeah.
Councillor Salk? In the interest of time.
No. I'm gonna add to councillor Court's thought for just a moment. We have a small pot of cash that was coming to us unexpectedly, and here we are talking about doing exactly what we always do. Same as it ever was, we're gonna bury it. And we should do something that the citizens can use. And by that, I mean, there is another thing that we could look at. And I'll share this with each of you. This, and I know you're sick of hearing about it.
Do you have another copy, councillor?
You can have mine.
Thank you.
I thought I did eight of them.
So there's four here.
Okay, alright.
So if we wanna think big picture, I'd like to look at it this way. Along the Lee Creek Valley, along the nature path, we have an opportunity to do something for ongoing growth in the town, and by that, I mean tourism. We've done some things where, first of all, we've, are in the process of expanding our campground. So we're gonna add some spots there, that's gonna help, which connects to the golf course. This that I've thrown in front of you now is using that spot that's beside the pool for a recreational type facility that will incorporate three pickleball courts and a full-size basketball court and an enclosed building. Now, there's varying models of this that we could look at, where you could do this on, as Jeff likes to say, it could be scalable, where we do something one year and then we build up from there into, we put a lid on it, we insulate it, or we just build the building. The preliminary cost that the Cartston and County Pickleball Association has come up with is they've looked at a building, a metal structure, and they're working on it to match what would look, what the pool looks like on the outside. And it would be a hundred and twenty feet long and eighty feet wide. And the costs would be somewhere in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand dollars plus, depending upon all the amenities you wanna add to it.
You mean the whole of what you're presenting here?
Yes.
Okay.
It would be four to five hundred thousand dollars plus to build this building.
Plus the building?
No, four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars to build the building. And then depending upon the amenities that you add to it, like whether you're going to put in a walking track, or whether you're gonna do all that other stuff inside of it. Now, we talked about a recreational facility, and we've talked about it, and we've realized that, one, it's expensive, that we have a hard time with a six million dollar price tag. But maybe there's something that's at a scale that we could afford, and maybe it's something that could be used. So in the near future, you're going to have a bunch of pickleball players that are orphans because they have no place to play. And I have a feeling that the church either stake is not gonna let them back into playing churches anytime soon. You have the morning basketball players who've been kicked out of the high school because of COVID. You have all of those things. If you're looking at a big picture thing, then we're looking at this whole, we're expanding the campground, we wanna funnel that into the golf course. We wanna have another facility like this. So we have a whole corridor along there that would allow for more tourism, more recreation, more people coming to town to do other things. The other idea I'd like to throw out, and unfortunately Shim's my tech guy, but.
Okay, just, just explain to us.
Along.
Connected?
That's it.
Do I get this on?
Maybe. Bear with me for just a second.
Counselor Silk, can you repeat what this building is?
There's no firm cost on it, Counselor.
No, no, no. But what is involved with your drawing here? How many pick...
It would be a basketball court, which means then you could play volleyball, you could play basketball, you could play badminton, you could play pickleball, you could play whatever you want in a gym.
They use on the same floor, is that what you're saying?
They're interchangeable.
Good. So if you give me the Air Media app?
Yeah.
One second, let's see if this will fire. There we go.
He's got showers.
Counselor Silk?
Yeah.
Has the pickleball association approached the county?
They are going to.
And they got some deep pockets.
Oh, there you go. Well, yeah, that's you, isn't it?
That is me.
Okay, there you go. How about that?
Well, let me see if I can...
Would you look at that?
Actually works.
Okay. This is a bike park in Blairmore. And along the land that we have down along the creek, and Shim told me that unfortunately a lot of that is privately owned, but there is a space in there where you could build something like this. Nope, not that. This, this, and this shows you what they have in Blairmore. If you travel across the Cooley and Lethbridge, on the bridge, they have a bike park that's much smaller, but you get an idea. So in the creek valley, right along the nature path, you would have this pickleball complex, you would have the pool, you would have the golf course, you would have this, and you'd have...
Spray park.
The spray park, the splash park, all on a nicely rejuvenated nature trail that people could use, and an additional 15 or so camp stalls in the campground.
Also hooked into Dr. Levitt's.
So Counselor Silk, you brought in a very interesting idea, I must say.
Is that all you picked?
What needs to be done for us is obviously to have a better sense of the cost of the project, but as a preliminary idea, it's an interesting idea. Counselors, you want to ask questions? You want to add comments? What I'm interested to note, Jeff, within the parameters of the funding, does that fit the guideline number one? Could such a thing fit the guideline? So that's the number-one question, right? So we know that the one you listed fit the guideline, but I don't know about this, because I did not read, honestly, all the requirements regarding that. So maybe, did you, Counselor Silk?
I did.
So you satisfy it fits?
There is one section, and it's in the red tape reduction section of all of that preamble to MSP. It says the qualifications. One of the qualifications, or one of the things that they want to see in red tape production is, "What is your community doing to attract more in the way of business or tourism to your area?"
Right. So you would say that it would fit that parameter quite well?
That's what I'm suggesting.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
Obviously, I'm supportive of this, because I think it's fabulous. I just do, I have a question. I have a question in regards to, so this little area here off the side, is this bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay, so would there not be a way, because we already have this at the pool, of attaching somehow it, so we're not having to spend that square footage where we could put my track with that extra money?
Anything's possible.
Because you know what I'm saying?
Yep, anything's possible, Counselor.
We already have the bathrooms that are getting used through the winter there because of the gym that's below.
You're going to have to attach some sort of a tunnel or, you know, some sort of structure for them to get from that building to the pool.
It's just a thought.
But anything's possible.
Okay.
So if I might, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Jeff, I'm going to send some emails to you that if you want to forward to all of them that talks about building and costs and all that stuff. Is that okay? Is that okay, Mayor?
Everything is possible. All what I need to know, Jeff, do we have a time limit regarding the use of the municipal stimulus program? That is something that is a concern for me regarding that.
We have to submit our projects by October 1.
Oh, wow.
Well, we don't have much time.
Three weeks. Yeah. We have three weeks to submit a project. So time doesn't help this if we're starting from scratch, I would suggest, right? Because there's still everything else to consider. So, yeah, there is a time factor, for sure.
I have to be honest, I wasn't intending on bringing this up tonight. I was going to talk about it in generalities on our meeting on the 23rd.
Okay. Counselor Silk, because of the time constraint, it doesn't take away from the interest I think this council might have regarding that idea. Should we, as a council, have an option A and option B? Because if time is a constraint and we cannot meet the time, we need to have something in place to be able to say, this is what will take place. Administration cannot be left with no idea of what council wants. So my point of view, there are two things we should do. One is see if administration can manage to get costing along with Counselor Silk and whoever is working with his group. That could be one option. And then the other option, if we cannot get to the bottom of this in time, is to have a priority out of the list that we're given. So here is one that we could do. How many would support Hole 16?
Can I, before we go?
But doesn't mean that that is what we're going to do. Those are options, okay, Counselor?
Can I just make a comment about the golf course in general?
Please, go ahead.
Okay. There's probably a very strong possibility the golf course is going to make some money this year, right? My recommendation would be, like we've been talking, that we need to put Hole 16 in the budget anyway. So put Hole 16 in the budget, and any additional money that we have set aside or that we're using from our line of credit for equipment, that's in the budget. As for any money that the golf course makes this year, my recommendation would be, we set that money aside, reserve it for a clubhouse, because we have a recreational facility that, my golly, it made money, unlike all the other recreational facilities we have.
Okay. But then, Counselor Silk, the budget cannot absorb everything without having something in revenues that may help. And that might be a little bit of help, even if we don't do so.
Are we not reserving money for recreational purposes?
We do.
Don't we have money set aside in reserves, Jeff, if I might?
We have some for the...
In front of me, but yes, there's some general reserves. Boy, I could find that for you even after the break, because I know exactly where it is, I just don't have it with me.
Yeah, there is some money reserved, but the reason we reserve is because the pool sooner or later will also need upgrade, right?
Let's not talk about the pool right now, since we just finished fixing it.
I know, but the truth of the matter is, it comes back every 15 years, right? So this is why, this is how we managed to get it renewed the first time around. So I had a question, and I don't know if you want to answer the question or not. You can tell me what you would prefer, but I think sooner or later, we need to give administration a sense of what could happen before the end of the month.
So, Mayor, I think...
Counselor Ben-Gree?
Okay. With time of the essence and then a new idea on the table, I think what I would try and do is have as much information gathered as we can on this by the 22nd meeting, because then we've still got a week, even if that means we have to by email come to some general consensus on the 28th, what we're submitting, something like that, right? So if you're still not settled tonight, that's okay. We have three weeks. So I can explore a couple of things in the interim.
Well, I prefer that, honestly, because it's a little difficult to make a decision with a new project on the table. Yes.
That 22nd meeting, isn't that our AUMA meeting? I thought that was...
Planning.
That's our planning session.
But it's...
Can we make decisions on that day, or just recommendations?
We were going to talk recreation on that day anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part of the...
Counselor Drew?
So I actually really like this idea. The money is there, it's not going to cost us anything. But I also think that we probably need to have another venue as well, and I would be willing to put in Hole 16 and the storm drainage lift as another option if this doesn't pan out.
Yeah. Anybody else wants to talk to that? Counselor Barnes, you can mention the same thing, and possibly the twinning.
Yep. But I love this idea, too.
Yeah, well, of course, it's a very interesting idea. And thank you for bringing it up, by the way, Counselor Silk. Counselor Ben-Gree, what in that list?
I'll go along with Counselor Drew.
Okay. And then Counselor Court, I know that Hole 16 is not your favorite, you would rather see the money?
No, I understand it needs to be fixed as well. I just see a chance to improve our... We have a lot of younger people moving to town, surprisingly enough, and we need something for them to do. And yes, we need sewers, but we also need something to draw them here.
Right.
So you would be, you would accept the fixing of the hole in order to...
I would. I like that idea big time.
Yeah, no, I mean...
Yes, I do like that idea. 16 is going to be fixed, one way or another, some funding or another, whether it's just funding or some other funding.
Or a combination of funding, honestly. It doesn't mean that we have to put all the eggs in the same basket.
That reminds a golf...
And Counselor Brown?
Clubhouse, too.
I know, I know.
So let's put numbers to it. So my very, my favorite would be this.
Yeah, of course.
The Silk Complex. The second one...
The Memorial.
And it'll say something about lipstick on a pig. Anyway, I would think, so that would be my number-one Silk Complex. Number-two would be, I really am a huge supporter of Hole 16 getting done, because...
I know, it needs to be done.
It has to be done. And my number-three, I'm pretty torn between the sewers, isn't that funny? Between the twin, the sewer line and the storm drainage.
Yeah.
That would be my number-three.
Okay, so Jeff, the consensus for option two, option one would be, the preferred option would be the new option. Option two would be, from what I heard and the note I took, Hole 16 and a storm drainage lift, one. Okay? So that would be the alternate option. If we can manage this, I think there is a preference for that new project, but you will need to work with Counselor Silk.
Yeah, Counselor, I just want to talk to you right after, so that we don't duplicate. I'm assuming I know who's bird-dogging this, by the way.
You can tell from the emails, can't you?
Yeah, it doesn't take a brain to figure it out, does it?
Yeah, I just looked at your email, and it became quite clear. I was taking it on, so I'll...
Clearly.
Okay, we'll go with that.
But I will say that those Karts and Pickleballers there are relentless.
Well...
They also have money to back up.
Do they have a little bit of money in their pockets?
I hope so, because I'll...
So they'll need some money in their pockets, okay?
I will say this, Mayor, that the question they've asked is this. Okay, what if they just take this on as a community facility themselves? What if they are the ones who, you know, the problem is that we've got to put in some public funds, we've got to use this MSP, but what if they want to pursue some private money, and they want to be the ones who build it? I said, "I don't know. I'd ask," and that's a question I have for you, Jeff, is that, I guess you'll have to...
Can MSP money be a twin with public funding?
What the, this is a weird little grant, but the short answer, yes, by the way.
Okay, well, that's a good question.
What it says is you can match it with other funds, if the other party's okay with stacking, is what they normally call it.
Yes, I call it stacking, yeah.
But you can't pursue that until after MSP has approved your project. So you can't go, you can't submit your application saying 50% MSI, 50% MSP, for example.
Okay.
You can submit the MSP application, and then after it's approved, and they say, "Yes, it qualifies," you can proceed to find other funding methods. It's a bit strange, but that's what they're saying. You can't stack it before, you have to stack it after.
I mean, it's such an interesting thing, because they're almost saying, like, "Can this be our baby, and we'll run with it?" And I'm like, "I don't know from an administrative point of view and from a town, you know." So I don't know what to say, other than if we approve this, and this is what we want.
Or can it be a P3?
Yeah, can it be a P3?
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe a P3 might be a little bit more palatable.
Yep, maybe.
Because the town still has vested interests in a venue.
Yeah, I like the idea of P3.
You know.
Anyway, sorry to throw...
All right, so thank you very much. Thank you, thank... Thank you very much. I see that, I see that Shim has brought us a little bit of sustenance there, so if somebody wants to...
Motion to recess for, what, 15 minutes?
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Counselor Barnes, do you want to offer a word of prayer?
Sure.